Twenty eighth, meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission to order. I apologize for our slight delay. A few of us were sidelined downstairs. We usually start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'd like to ask Joe Galván if he could lead us, please, in the pledge.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and it is a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you very much. We typically start with presentations by the public on matters not on our agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission. We do not have any requests to speak, but however, if you'd like to speak on any items, and welcome, folks, tonight. If you'd like to speak on any items, there is a slip that, right next to the entrance where you came in, it looks like this. If you'd fill it out and leave it with our clerk, she'll walk it up to me, and when we get to the item on which you'd like to speak, I'll call you up. We ask that folks speak for about, no longer than three minutes, and we ask that the audience is respectful, no cat calls, no applause, and so forth, so that we can have civil discourse. And there are no requests to speak on this item, on item A, so we'll move on to the consideration and approval of the minutes from April fifteenth. And a few folks weren't there, so they'll need to abstain. For folks who were there, if you haven't reviewed these and would like to make a motion to approve or have additions.
Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes from April fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Lebig. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain, please.
Right, Mr. Ledesma, Mr. Galván. All right, we'll move to the approval order. We have a request by an applicant to continue item number four. Any other requests or is there approval for the agenda order?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we do continue item four to June fourth.
All right.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Morzini, seconded by Mr. Ledesma. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we'll continue item number four. Turning to item D, Mr. Ricola, Correspondence and Staff Communications from the City Planner.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. You should have four items of correspondence for you tonight. First of all, a memo from David Tilly on Agenda Item Number Two regarding changes to the zoning ordinance. And then there are three items of correspondence on Agenda Item Number Three, the Aggie Liquor Deli and Conditional Use Permit. First of all, you should have a copy of the memo from Senior Planner Sandra White, as well as a petition for the support of the Aggie Gourmet Liquor Store, as well as correspondence entitled "Aggie Liquor, a High End Liquor Store Really." So those are the four items of correspondence. Last night, the City Council considered the city's new budget for the coming year. Obviously, there was substantial discussion on it. You probably heard some of the discussion about it, that budget, and did include some relatively significant reductions to the planning unit budget as well, and we'll be talking about those at a later time. So with that, that's just a quick sort of summary of what's going on for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ricola. We'll move to item number E, which is Disclosure of Ex parte Communications. Because we're in a public, we have a public forum here, if commissioners have had conversations with applicants or others before the, before items before us, they share that with the public. So I'd like to ask to see if anyone has any communications to disclose. No, on any item?
Actually, I had a conversation with one of the neighborhood residents regarding item number three.
All right. Well, that brings us to our consent agenda. We have one item. If there are no questions.
Actually, I just do have a question on this. Steve, is this yours?
Yep.
Okay. You know, when you did this, I see that we've limited the zoning to where it could go to. Can it go elsewhere if it's conditional?
The way this is, the way this is currently written, this would be permitted anywhere that the category of other business services is, wherever that's permitted or conditionally Adding additional zones where this would be a conditional use would take some more amendments to the definition or the land use matrix.
Well, there used to be some in, I think, the M1 area. There was a couple of them over there, and that's why I was wondering, are they permitted because they're already there?
There were, there was at least one case of an existing similar use that our research turned up during this process, that had been there for quite some time. Other business services in the zoning ordinance currently is permitted in the M1 zone, so this would be consistent with those existing ones.
Oh, okay, okay. I just didn't see that one listed, and that's why I was...
No, it's not specific, it's not specifically listed in here.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, or is there a motion?
With that, I'd make a motion that we affirm the zoning administrator action.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Lebig. There's a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
That takes us to our regular agenda, and the first item is a public hearing regarding proposed changes to the zoning ordinance.
Yes, David Tilly will be presenting the staff report tonight, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Ricola, Mr. Tilly.
Good evening. Tonight, in a public hearing format, we're presenting two important yet unrelated changes to the zoning ordinance, with the intent that the Planning Commission will be prepared to act on both topics this evening. If the commission does act, staff will package these changes with previously recommended changes and bring them to the City Council in the near future. I'll be presenting both topics, and would ask that we do questions, we can do questions afterward, or alternatively, the commission may decide to elect to ask questions about each topic as I bring them up. The first of the two topics is related to massage and massage services. We brought this before the commission back in February under a workshop format. And just by way of background, since it's been a few months since we're up here, except under most limited circumstances, massage in West Sacramento is treated as an adult business, and is therefore subject to use permit requirements, limited zones, spacing requirements from schools and parks and other, and other things like that. And it is, so there's very strict limitations. When someone proposes to have a massage business in a fixed location, which, under our current municipal code, is defined as four or more days in any consecutive thirty-day period, usually the adult business restrictions effectively have prohibited establish any businesses other than, like chiropractors and other medical professionals that provide the service from opening. Over the last several years, we've had numerous inquiries and have denied numerous business licenses because of this condition of the ordinance. As an aside, the converse of this, of course, is that massage practitioners that operate on a mobile basis, where they go to their clients' offices or residences, are actually allowed to do that because they're not in a fixed location. And even though this means that, as being mobile, they have much less oversight, because they're mobile rather than being in a storefront environment. So based on direction we received from the City Manager's Office regarding how massage is treated under our municipal code, we are proposing to make some amendments to our zoning code related to massage establishments. The first is that we would add an actual definition of massage establishment and add that to the definition section in the back of the zoning ordinance. We would also put massage establishments as a land use category in the zoning matrix. And lastly, and most importantly, we would delete the reference to massage establishments in the adult, adult business regulations. That would serve to decouple massage from as being an adult business, and then it could be treated more similarly to other personal services, such as, you know, beauty shop barbers, barbers, and et cetera. Massage establishments would remain, and massage practitioners would remain subject to the rigorous business licensing requirements that are in the city's municipal code, Section 5.12, which establishes a significant review process for the establishment itself, and then each practitioner and licensing requirements. As part of regular course of business, that, that facet of business license reviews includes the city's police department, county health, and as well as the city's building department. Previously, we had conferenced these changes with the city's police department, and they are supportive of how we wish to proceed. Unless we have any questions regarding that, at this time, I'd move on to our next topic, which is on mobile home parks. Recently, the city planning division was approached by our colleagues in the housing division regarding some grant funding that they had obtained that was specific to mobile home parks, where they're going to using that money to help the park owners make certain improvements within the, some of the existing mobile home parks here in West Sacramento. When we looked into this a little further, we really realized that many of the mobile home parks in town are nonconforming in one way or another to their acreage, or just their straight zoning that they're in, or any other facet. And ordinarily, as the commission is well aware, there's a lot of limitations on what can be done with nonconforming uses. Ordinarily, they can't be expanded, and their improvements that are allowed to do them are very limited. It's typically not an issue for mobile home parks, because much of what goes on within the mobile home park remains under the jurisdiction of state housing and community development, and the city doesn't have much, if any, role in any of those improvements. However, in this particular case, since the city has obtained grant funding, and Kathy Allen, our planning alumnus with the housing division, is here to, can elaborate on that, since the city would be partially financing some of these improvements, and the zoning compliance is necessary for, to satisfy HCD, we realized we needed to make a change in our nonconforming regulations to allow, in these limited circumstances where the city is partially financing, improvements to nonconforming mobile home parks, that that could allow, that could proceed without being tripped up by the nonconforming regulations. So thus, in proposed, proposed to you tonight, and in the memorandum that I provided to you, we're proposing to add an additional section to the nonconforming use section of the municipal code that specifically addresses existing nonconforming mobile home parks, and identifies certain improvements that would be permitted. And then additionally, we are, within the memo, we are recommending that a, kind of a cross-reference be put in the mobile home park section of the zoning ordinance, so that the reader can be referenced back and forth if they're interested in this particular topic. The memo tonight includes one extra phrase in the language that was provided to you in previously, which is the language that, to the extent permitted by state law governing mobile home parks. Consultation with the city's, city attorney's office, and in recognition that much of mobile home park day-to-day operations and improvements is still regulated by HCD, we wanted to make sure that, under this scenario, nothing was put in our municipal code would be in conflict with state law as it pertains to mobile home parks. And of course, a modified version of that resolution has been provided to you tonight as well. So with that, I'd like to close my presentation, and Kathy and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly, and we do not have any requests to speak on this item, so I'll bring it to the commission for your questions, comments. Mr. Lebig?
I just have one, and this actually may be a question for Mr. Mitchell. How easy is it to change the definition?
To change?
Of massage? I don't want to read it out loud. It actually makes me chuckle.
The definition of massage that currently exists in the zoning code?
We're actually adding it.
Oh, the one that we're adding?
Yes.
Well, that definition is written the way it is to be consistent with the definition in the business license ordinance. So if we change this, we'll also need to change the definition in the business license ordinance as well.
So we should leave it? Okay. I would only strike out the words that really make it sound like an adult business, so that's it.
You can certainly tell us how you, this is a workshop, so...
Oh, well, we're here.
But you can still, you can tell us how you'd like to change it, and when it goes to council.
No, it's, I think it's okay. It's just, thank you.
Madam Chairman, I have a similar question, 'cause I don't see anything in this definition that distinguishes it between an adult type of activity and one that wouldn't be an adult type activity. And like Commissioner Lebig, I just assume not read it, because it's, it can be interpreted lots of different ways, it seems to me. And I would, I would hope that the intent here, as I understood it, was to legitimize a massage parlor, because most massage parlors are ethical, and they provide a great service to the general public, and not just to an exclusive clientele. And this definition doesn't address that at all. And my other point, just point of clarification, on the mobile home parks, on E, improvements exceeding these criteria may be permitted upon approval of the zoning administrator. And I'm just wondering, Kathy, what types of improvements those might be that the zoning administrator might, might decide on? I would assume they'd be minor improvements.
And Mr. Morzini, just bringing you to the memorandum, that there was a clause added to E, which is "to the extent permitted by state law governing mobile home parks." That's on the, that was the addition. Do you see it?
Okay, I haven't had time to read.
No, that's okay. We just got it tonight, so. Ms. Allen?
Good evening. In terms...
We wouldn't want you to come here for nothing, Kathy. It's good to see you.
But of, but of course. In, in terms of E, we put that in there primarily as, as a placeholder in case other issues came up that we did not think of originally, that the zoning order, zoning administrator could, could vet those issues at a later date.
Okay, but I would assume that some of these restrictions that, that we're putting on mobile home expansion are within the state law also. So it seems like we're trying to narrow down so that we don't expand or intensify the use of, of mobile home parks beyond maintenance, pretty much maintenance, and maybe expanding a community center and a laundry, but not adding any more spaces or anything. So there are probably lots of things that are, or within the state law, but I'm just, I'm just wondering about the, what kind of latitude the zoning administrator's going to have.
Well, our primary concern in terms of drafting this had to do with infrastructure improvements, and in terms of roads, in terms of things like electrical and sewer upgrades, those are the things we were most concerned with, and the things that are most likely with the grant applications that we have received that would be applicable to this. We modeled, we modeled this on the changes that were another nonconforming change in terms of E. If you wished to, to strike it and have it only cover the, the four, four other items, I don't think we would have an objection to that.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. I'm just wondering the extent of those, 'cause it could, I guess by, by not having that definition and not seeing the rest of the mobile home park ordinances, that I think probably the, the main thing you're wanting to do is prevent intensifying the use, adding, adding spaces, or, or making provisions for larger units, or that sort of thing. Is that, is that reasonable?
Yeah, there's a provision in the mobile home park section of zoning ordinance that already addresses expansion, and when that, when that might occur. We were really trying to zero in on, you know, the minor improvements that, you know, we want to fund through these grants that are really kind of necessary to bring. I know one of the examples is, there's one small park, I believe, on West Capitol Avenue, where I think they still only have forty amp electrical service, and one of these grants is going to fund getting them up to more current standards with electrical. But none of this was meant to either prevent or facilitate expansion of parks. This was mostly just in the rare circumstances where the city does have grant funds, want to be able to spend those on improvements within mobile home parks.
I see. So if we were to add the word "minor improvements" to, to E, that wouldn't, that wouldn't bother...
We wouldn't object, we would not object to that.
All right. What about, what about the comments by Mr. Lebig and myself regarding the definition, because I don't see a stipulation there.
Well, the, let's go back to the, it was, we have not actually changed that definition as Mr. Mitchell mentioned, because it would trigger more substantive changes to the business licensing section, which is a, which is a very lengthy section as it pertains to massage. And at this, at this stage, we were recommending that we maintain consistency with that until such time as we're able to, because that section in the municipal code dates back and still refers to the county code from the mid-seventies, and recognize at some point in time that whole section may need to be updated as well. But at this time, we're really not resourced to go into a whole exercise with the business licensing side of it. But we want to, at least for now, retain some of that oversight that's provided during business licensing, which is much greater than just a regular business license for other types of businesses. And so we are, we would recommend that, for now at least, we leave the definition as it exists in the municipal code.
Just seems, it seems appropriate, if we're going to allow a change in, first of all, the other kind of massage is illegal, I presume, in the city. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna legitimize massage parlors, why don't we legitimize them by definition? And then, that's the first thing you do, and then the second thing you do is say where you can do this. That's really what we're trying to accomplish, and it doesn't seem like we're doing the second, but we're not addressing the first. And it would just seem to me that that definition should, should be what we would consider appropriate for a massage parlor in West Sacramento.
I think we're going to need a little more clarity. I'm, I'm, I'm a bit confused. Are you saying you want to have two different definitions of massage, one of which would be an adult use, and one would not be an adult use?
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that we have two definitions. All I want to do is have a definition of what's appropriate in these, if we approve this, in these particular zones. Because it's obvious by this discussion that some massages aren't appropriate or legal, why don't we define what is legal to be done in these, these zones that we're, we're proposing?
That is, that is what you would be doing tonight. That, that is the proposed action. You would be making it legal, or viewed another way, you would be removing it as an illegal activity. So...
Okay, Mr. Ledesma, and then Mr. Galván.
Thank you. I think, I think we're, where this issue comes to a little bit of a hang-up is this definition, which nobody wants to read out loud, I'm waiting for the crowd to go rush to get a copy of it. It, it does leave open the interpretation that some adult activity could occur, and I think, in reading it, I think the intent, we understand the intent, is that we're trying to, to make it easier for day spas that provide massage services, or, or massage envisas, what's quoted here, to make it an easier process to go through. But I think the risk that's, that's being articulated here is that those that are an independent operator could take this and move into anywhere without any rigorous review, and start operating in an adult massage parlor. I think that's where I'm sort of, I think where the hang-up here is. So I, I would simply think that, you know, I, I think the implicit definition here is a massage is a legal act, non-adult-related massage, adult business or related, that we're, we're trying to make sure is clear, that, that we're, you know, you can't, if you're, you know, and, and I guess there's...
Well, I understand what you're struggling with, and it is the same thing that cities throughout the country struggle with in addressing, in trying to draw a line between what is an adult activity, and therefore something that has potential harmful secondary impacts, and therefore can be regulated, and those activities which do not carry with them that potential for harmful secondary impacts, and therefore should be allowed to operate, you know, with more normal regulation. It may be that this is an area that we need to spend more time on. Adult use regulations is a very complex area, and we were trying to avoid having to go back and, and revisit the city's adult use ordinance, which hasn't frankly been looked at in twenty years. And so we were trying to, to fix a particular issue without opening up the need to revisit the entire adult use ordinance. But what I'm hearing is that the Planning Commission isn't entirely comfortable with the approach that we're taking right now.
Well, I'm not sure that we are, you know, I could say that, the intent, I think we're, at least I can speak for myself, the intent, what we're trying to do, if there's, I'll say, a quick fix, to kind of get to where, where we can get, you know, a legitimate business, a day spa, a massage envy, identify that as an example of what it may include, that might make it easier to kind of swallow this and go back and get the, the, the other piece at another time. Because I don't think anybody has the intention of kind of putting staff into that sort of exercise.
Okay.
But that's, that, that would be what, maybe what we're looking for here, is how do we kind of carve out that piece to make it clear what we're intending, and then leave it up to staff implementation at the desk, or whatever else. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ledesma. Mr. Lebig has a suggestion, but Mr. Galván, you're next.
I, I share sort of the same concerns. The problem is, I'm not sure even a tighter definition will sort of minimize the possibilities. And it's not the massage envisas that worry me, it's the possibilities of, you know, nobody applies for a legitimate license or legal. So it's possibilities that exist if we open up zoning throughout the city for, for massage parlors. And I'm not sure how you define, you know, how you, how you differentiate between a massage envy and, and another massage parlor. But I'd like to look at the possibility of, I understand the need for, or, you know, a business like a day spa that may offer, you know, haircuts, manicures, pedicures, that type of, that type of service. So I'd look at the possibility of maybe allowing it as an accessory use, and maybe that's how we can define.
I think there are a number of possible approaches that could be considered. I, I say, I understand what you're struggling with. It's not something that I think I'm going to recommend we try to fix tonight, because it has implications in adult use regulation, which, as I say, is very heavily litigated and a very, it's a very difficult area to, to walk through. I would suggest that we not try to fix it this evening.
Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, and Mr. Lebig, and then Mr. Morzini.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Okay, a simple suggestion to get around changing the definition. One thing I thought of was, besides striking a whole lot of the words, was to add at the end "for therapeutic or for health purposes." But if we... But if we change, um, the name of the actual, I guess, zone or, or use, or it's a use, instead of massage establishment, can we call it a therapeutic massage establishment? And would that cut to the chase?
I think that's something we'll look at, um, to address Mr. Galván's question about how you make the distinction between them. You know, all of the, any business that, of course, that we would approve, uh, either based on the ordinance as it stands tonight, or as the changes we're talking about looking and bringing back to you, will still be reviewed on a continual basis by, uh, not only the planning staff, but code enforcement and the police department to make a distinction as to whether or not the business is operating within the confines of the law. I mean, that's essentially what we'll do. But it sounds like, from the comments that I hear tonight, that this item is not ready to move forward. So I would suggest that the commission may, might wish to consider having this brought back to them at their next meeting.
All right, and Mr. Marzini? And it sounds like there's an encouragement to continue. So, Mr. Marzini and then I believe Mr. Moore?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be really brief. I, I just want the definition to be something that would be kind of a G-rated activity in, in the definition, so that there's no question about what's occurring, what would be occurring in one of these establishments.
Unfortunately, the actual practice of massage, uh, does involve more activities than, you know, something that may be able to be identified as a G-rated activity. But I think we understand pretty clearly what the concerns are of the commission and what their objections are to the existing definition. And we most likely take a amendment, not only to the zoning ordinance, but also amendment to the existing provisions in the business license code of the city.
Thank you, Mr..
If, if that is the case, however, tonight, we would like the planning commission, if they have no objections, to move forward the provisions regarding manufactured homes.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you. I don't care, I liked reading what you guys had for a definition. But my question comes back, because I, you know, one of the things that I always thought brought this on was, there was someone that did massages over at the Fifteenth Street Fitness Center, and then they closed that section down. I understood at one point that she was trying to come down here to get a license, and we didn't have a spot in the city for them. And, and, which only brings up my question here, is that if that's the type of thing, if we have a fitness center and it is in one of the zones, it's not what we designated, again, do they have the right to ask to be able to go into that fitness center with a therapy center like that, or a massage center? And I don't have a s- particular idea of where that would be, but if they built one in the port, I mean, couldn't you get a conditional use permit to go along with something like that?
Well, the, our definition of health club, you know, does make reference to massages being able to be offered on an incidental basis. But I, and I can think, I think of another example of this, where this was kind of came up recently, whereas we had someone apply for a business license who was going to be going to the Calsters building and providing, you know, chair massages, you know, once or twice a week, um, to their employees over there.
Same idea, yeah.
And we had to turn that down because that person was going to be there more than four days a month, which met the fixed place of business definition, which meant that they were a massage parlor, which meant they were a, um, adult business. And, you know, this is a scenario.
Well, I, I think my point is though, David, I mean, what about the designations here? I mean, Calsters, you've got it in the waterfront area, so that would qualify now. But if it just happens to be in another zone somewhere, can they apply for a conditional use permit?
Well, we've, we've set it up, at least currently, to be set it up where it's similar, you know, will be allowed on, as a permitted basis, as, you know, the same way as, um, other personal services, such as, you know, hair, hair salons and things like that. That's, it certainly doesn't mean we can't expand that to other zones or truncate it for that matter. But we were kind of fitting and under the overall personal.
Well, I think it fits where it would probably go. I would just, you know, again, trying to make the comment that should something develop out in a business park, you know, you'd hate to see that it didn't fit in there. Just a thought. My next question, and the one that I'm really concerned about, is the mobile home park, which I think is absolutely a wonderful idea, what we're trying to do here. My question would be, I know that Councilman Beer's worked for weeks and months trying to get all the people at the mobile home parks together and come up with a, a consensus before when we were dealing with that issue. Have we run this up the flagpole with those same people that participated in that?
Uh, we have it as much, um, the, as you may know, that, you know, the council has a mobile home park improvement strategy.
Right.
That was the outcome of that effort. And the grants that we have applied for and have obtained are have been, are one of the objectives of that, um, that effort. So we're trying now to kind of close the loop to be able to help implement that effort by, uh, being able to expend those grant funds doing these improvements.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any more comments? I have a, I have a suggestion for moving forward. Um, I, I'd like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution ten dash three PC that deletes, in the resolution itself, deletes seventeen point two-three, seventeen point four-six and seventeen point seven-two. So we're moving forward seventeen point four-four and seventeen point five-one. And that the exhibit, um, deletes the adult entertainment use and definitions. So that, I think with those, those, uh, changes, that, that would move forward simply as the non-conforming manufactured home parks and existing mobile home park sections. And then we can take up continuing the other part of the item separately. But if, if someone wants to make that motion, we can move forward with that action.
Was your suggestion that we do the mobile home park?
It was to, it was, yeah, it was to take, it was extract the massage pieces out of the Resolution ten dash three PC.
And cable the massage part.
And then continue that. But let's, we could take up the resolution first and then talk about continuing the other piece.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to, uh, adopt the resolution, uh, just on the mobile home piece.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, moved by, uh, Mr. Ledesma, seconded by Mr. Moore. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, passes unanimously. And then I'll entertain a motion to continue the items pertaining to the massage piece.
I, yeah, I'd make a motion that we continue the item on massage to, uh, set time or, uh...
The next meeting in June.
Till June?
Which will be June second, fourth, fourth.
June, the June, first June meeting.
It's the first meeting in June.
To the first meeting?
June third, June third.
To June third.
All right, Mr. Moore moves, and there's a second by Mr. Galván, to continue the massage portion of this item to June third. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Tilly. We will move to the item number three, which is a continued public hearing for Aggie Liquor and Deli condit- conditional use permits. Before we start, I'd just like to review, I know there's a number of folks here tonight, some of you may not have come before and spoken at a, at a public forum like this or a public hearing. So our review process, we, we will receive a, a staff report about this item, the commission, and, and you'll hear that. We'll then ask the applicant if, if he or she would like to make some comments. We'll then open, we open up the public hearing, and at that time, I'll call folks who have, who have asked to speak. We have quite a few, so we'll keep it to the three minutes. And you'll have, um, there's a timer, so you'll know when the, when the three minutes are up. We, that, that, you can, you can make all the comments and, um, in- information you'd like to share with us. We won't engage at that time in a back and forth, so it'll seem probably, and when you're talking to us kind of one-sided, like you're asking us questions, we'll listen to those and absorb those. And then we bring it back to the commission for our questions. We often then will ask questions of staff and sometimes of the applicant. And then we'll have a discussion and deliberation here in the, in the commission, and we'll make a decision. Our decision is tonight for the conditional use permit. However, we, we then, um, there's a, a process by which if, if any parties want to take it up, they, they can actually move this to the, to the coun- city council. So there can be a, a process of, for our decision. Of course, we'll make the best decision we can as citizens of the community, um, but that, that's the, the process, just so that folks kind of know how it, how it's moving forward. So with that, I'd like to, um, ask Ms. White, our staff person, to, uh, present our staff report on this item. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairperson Sandine and members of the planning commission. This item was continued from the eighteen, from the, excuse me, from the April fifteenth planning commission public hearing. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to sell hard liquor. The store, uh, will be located in Jefferson Plaza. In, in addition to hard liquor, the applicant will also sell beer, wine and other commodities. The planning commission asked a number of questions at the last public hearing regarding the liquor license process, which is, uh, being handled by the police department. And it was continued so that a representative from the police department, uh, would be available to answer any questions that the planning commission may have. And we have tonight Lieutenant Stockman, who, uh, who agreed to, um, be present at tonight's, uh, public hearing regarding this item. Uh, since the April fifteenth public meeting, uh, staff has received letters from residents and a petition e- expressing opposition to the conditional use permit. The applicant submitted additional information to staff today, which is packaged in a memo that you have before you. And that package includes a copy of the public notice that was posted on the business on February eighth regarding the applicant's, uh, application to the, uh, ABC. The applicant provided a copy of the notice that was mailed to residents located within five hundred feet of the business. Uh, a report produced by ABC regarding off-site liquor licenses located in Southport is included in that package. And a copy of the ABC license report for the applicant's store located in Davis is also included in the package as well. I just want to reiterate that the planning commission does not have any discretionary authority over liquor licenses. The planning commission only has a discretionary over, uh, authority over hard liquor sales as a land use. If the applicant was only proposing to sell beer and wine, a conditional use would not be required. Uh, with that, I would conclude my presentation and recommend that the planning commission conduct a public hearing, certify that the planning commission has reviewed and considered the proposed categorical exemption as presented by staff and approve the requested conditional use permit, subject to the findings and conditions as identified in the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. White. Um, I'd like to ask if the applicant would like to present to the commission at this time? Okay? And open the public hearing. Thank you.
I'll just one thing from Aggie Liquor. At last meeting, I represent everything, what we're doing. We're mostly opening like a gourmet specialty liquor store. It's not available anywhere in West Sacramento. I have a client going out of town to get that. So we survey that, everything, that's, after that all, we decide to go for that one. So is landlord, require all the requirements, they check everything before they give me the space.
All right.
Any other question?
Thank you. I think we'll, um, hear from the public and then the, I'll, I'll leave the, the, um, public hearing open, so if commissioners have questions of you before we deliberate, we'll, we'll ask. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move to the folks who've asked us, uh, who's asked, asked to speak this evening. And the first person, Wahida Kakar? And so you know who's up next, uh, Rick Barrett will be asked to speak after Wahida.
Hello.
Thank you.
I've been a resident in West Sacramento for over nineteen years. I'm, I was pretty much raised here. And, um, I plan on spending the rest of my life here and having a family of my own eventually. And, um, lately I've been seeing a lot of backward turns in, in the planning and what's been going on in West Sacramento. And, um, the liquor store is, um, a real concern for me because I have a really large family, a lot of kids, and, uh, and I know some of the problems that are probably gonna come with this liquor store. Some of the problems, like I can, I can think of right now, um, there's a high school not too far from, uh, the liquor store that's, that, that they want there. And I know kids can come up with really creative ways to come up with some fake IDs and go in there and just get liquor. I mean, I'm sure, you know, whatever they presented, and they're gonna say, you know, we'll look at the ID, scan it, whatever device they have. But, I mean, there's all kinds of things that can happen, stealing the alcohol. And then, another problem that we have in our neighborhood, I live right behind a, a park, and currently we're having problems with kids doing drugs over there. And I can see, I can see alcohol becoming the next problem. And, um, we haven't, you know, we've been somewhat successful trying to contain that problem by having neighborhood meetings and, you know, having police force come in and, and like, you know, help, help us out and give us some ideas. So it's helped a little bit, but it seems like now we have another issue to worry about. And, let's see. And I noticed that there was a petition in here that was signed by some of the neighbors. And, um, I didn't know about the signatures on here, but I have about a hundred and plus family members living in West Sacramento, and I can easily get those signatures. And then I have neighbors that I didn't see their signatures here as well either. Um, over two hundred neighbors and friends, I can also get those signatures. And they all agree to what I say, they don't want a liquor store in our neighborhood. I mean, that's great that, you know, it's convenient, we have a liquor store not too far, but we have Nugget, um, you know, we have Tower Mart. And, I mean, that's convenient enough. And, and then there's Bevmo, they have absolutely everything you can imagine, and it's not that far. And Otomus is a ten-minute drive, fifteen-minute drive max. Um, there's another one in Arden, we can go over there and get those things. And then, if, I mean, I, like, um, she was saying, you know, don't have any authority over the beer and the wine, that's fine. But the hard liquor, if you guys can at least get that off the agenda, that'd be great too. Or if they can move the location somewhere else, maybe where Lowe's is at, you know, I'm, I'm sure some of us would be okay with that too. And I can see, you know, maybe we won't have problems in the short term. But then I can see later on, I mean, right now, we went to some other meetings and the cops are saying they don't have enough resources to contain some of the problems that's going on in West Sacramento. And...
All right, and, sorry, I'm moving on.
Sorry.
Yeah, the three minutes is up.
Oh.
But thank, thank you very much. Thank you. So next, um, thanks, Rick Barrett, and then, um, Ann Marzo?
I'm Rick Barrett.
Thank you.
Twenty-nine-year resident of all of, uh, out in Southport. And we used to have a four-way stop sign at Jefferson and Linden and, and Pheasant Club, and that was it. And, uh, for about twenty-five of those years, it's been great out there. A little crime, a little bit of this here and there, but, uh, Wahida touched on a little bit, uh, last few years, uh, I backed up to the, to Summerfield Park. And they put in a bridge a few years ago that connects our neighborhood with the Patwin Park side, I guess Bridgeway Island or whatever they call it over there. And ever since then, uh, we've, uh, experienced increase in crime like you couldn't believe, whether it be juveniles and adults or juveniles with adults. They've been doing all kinds of damage out there. We even, Chief Drummond's even put a special team, a CRT team out there that, uh, Wahida touched on, it's, it's helped quite a bit. But these juveniles, you know, they put in the high school, they put in the bridge, and they are twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year connected. And ninety-nine point nine, what comes across that bridge is great. That point one percent is what's causing the problems. And, uh, we used to never see cops out our way, didn't need them, until a couple of years ago when all this started. Uh, we've got a Tower Mart out there. We got the, got all the, there's enough liquor stores in our area. These kids, uh, we pushed them, a lot of them hang out now at Tower Mart. They put up some new signs, no loitering, but they're still hanging out there. I'll drive by at ten o'clock at night, and they're hanging out there, you know, eight or ten of them, at ten o'clock at night. This will give them another opportunity to loiter, uh, to purchase, uh, liquor or beer, whatever. We find, we find it all out there in the park the next day, a lot of times. And, uh, we don't need that resource, uh, we don't have the resources to cover, I don't think, this additional, uh, loitering opportunity and drinking opportunity for those kids.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Well, I know, 'cause we're fighting to maintain our quality of your life out there. Okay, we're in a fight. We see it every day, we're out there monitoring those kids and watching them, we all got binoculars, making sure what's going on, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Marzo, followed by Pam Stone?
Hi there, thanks for letting us have a chance to share our views, it means a lot to us. Um, I've lived in Southport for seven years, and I have a three-year-old son and a seven-year-old and one on the way. And like Wahida, I'm looking forward to raising my family here. And like Wahida, I'm looking forward to raising my family here. I love West Sacramento. Everyone I know who lives here loves it very, very much, as I'm sure you guys do. Also, I'm a very active volunteer at Southport Elementary, where my son goes to school. I was just elected the PTO president for next year. I'm excited about that. And also, I, my husband and I helped found our neighborhood watch that has been very active in trying to get some help for the new crime that we've had in the past, I'd say about two years. And it has been a fight for us. And the police department's been very helpful. And I know they want to do what they can to make sure that our quality of life stays the same. So I know that my views are pretty widely held, and a lot of people couldn't make the meeting tonight. They were busy at a meeting last night regarding the fire department. And also, like me, most of these, of the people with my views are not considering themselves activists. And I never felt like I was, until I realized that there are some things that we do need to be active about. And this is one of them. So my neighbor Rick alluded to the increase in crime that we've been documenting, that the police department seems to agree that there's been an increase in crime. They have taken it really seriously. For example, street racing has increased, home burglaries have increased. Neighbor had a several-pound rock thrown through his window once they found out he was on our neighborhood watch. He lives adjacent to the park, which is a couple of blocks from where this liquor store's being proposed. Also, we do witness the selling of drugs. And it happens late at night, and it's the hours that we're talking about that this liquor store proposes to be open. I know Tower Mart's open, I believe, till about 11:00. We're talking being open till midnight, half of the time, and then 2:00 AM the other half of the week, from what I read. I feel like the north area of town, they're trying to take away blight. And then how come in the south port area, they're proposing to, what obviously is going to increase blight? I'm not going to detail what happens when you have liquor stores open late at night, where we've got kids who are obviously wanting access to that kind of thing. And we find the empty beer bottles in the park every day. And we've got evidence of all that. In the broader picture, if you're adding a bridge to Broadway, if you're not willing to close the Patwin Bridge at night, and you're going to add marijuana dispensaries to the north area of town, we see, we're fighting. This is a big struggle for us, and we know what can happen in the future. And we have to nip this in the bud now and not wait until the problem is so big that there's nothing else we can do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Marzo. Pam Stone, followed by Santino Viermontes.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to thank you for your service to the community as well. And I know that in this economic times, that a tax base is important for the community. And it's important to have businesses that are viable and providing jobs and tax bases to the community. But in reading the commission's report, I was concerned about several of the required findings and analysis. Finding two says the requested use is essential or desirable to the public comfort and convenience. And I don't see support in the record for that. To me and our neighbors, the requested use is not essential. We have liquor stores, we have bars, we have the Nugget Market, we've got the Tower Mart. I didn't see any evidence that this was desirable or essential. As far as finding three, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the neighborhood. I couldn't disagree more. We've lived here for about, I don't know, 12 years. And this would be a significant shift to our neighborhood. The Tower Mart's been a local community establishment, but having, you know, a business from out of town that sells solely liquor would be a vast difference from what we have in place now. And as far as impairing the integrity or character of the neighborhood, when I heard that there was a liquor store that was proposed, that's the first thing that came to my mind is, wow, that's really not the character of this neighborhood that's right behind a liquor store. I mean, we live within walking distance, and we ride bikes with our sons and go right up to where this area is all the time. There's a karate studio that's filled with children every night of the week in this same strip mall, if you will. And I can't imagine the commission finding that this would not impair the integrity or character of the neighborhood. And I sent an email yesterday to the planning commission, looking up some studies that showed the increase in violent crime in communities with liquor stores. And this is something that the Southport area down near Linden and Jefferson has not had prior to this proposal. And I'm not at all sure that the tax benefit and the increase in revenue to the city would be outweighed by the cost to additional police patrols, not to mention the potential for violence and drunk driving in the neighborhood. And the high schools within walking distance, there's a preschool within walking distance. And I'm just not sure what kind of message that sends to the community. And I'll be honest with you, when we bought our home in West Sacramento, if I drove up to Linden and got ready to turn right, and the first thing I saw was a liquor store there, it would cause me to scratch my head and say, what is this, what's this community about? What's this city about? Are we going in the right direction? Are we going in the wrong direction? And I strongly argue that's not the image that we want for our community or for our families.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. Santino Viermontes, followed by Mark Patrick.
My name is Santino Viermontes. I don't know if you remember me from last time, but I was the only person here. I caught wind of it way late. I asked my captain if I could leave work, come over here, because it was an important issue to me. I've tried my hardest to get the word out as much as possible. I'm one person. The petition that you have in front of you is like two hours of just educating people and showing them. And all I told them was, go Google their businesses now and see if you want that here. That's it. The other things that I said was that they're asking for a hard liquor license, but they originally pitched it as classy beer and wine and upscale this and upscale that to all the tenants in the shopping center now, as well as anybody who even knew that this was happening. Mrs. White alluded to the fact that there was some notifications through the ABC or through the police department's investigation, whether or not it was okay to put this there. I lived directly behind this proposed spot. I never got word on. Actually, Mr. Singh talked to me after the last meeting and was telling me, you know, that he asked the community for this community need. He even fibbed a little bit and said that he came to the greenhouse behind the shopping center and talked to the people who live there. That's my house. He never came over my house. He never talked to me and my wife. I've talked to all the neighbors down Blacker. They're all on this petition. Some of the businesses around. I have more signatures from the petition that you have. I submitted as much as I could, a couple of letters. I have a letter, I've got a letter from one of the neighbors of his past tenants in the shopping center that he has in Davis. It was a cleaning supply. They have a letter in there written, handwritten, and it was the blight of that shopping center. That's their words, not mine. And they hated it. And it ended up being that they got, you know, the tenant or the landlord ended up not renewing their lease. Either way, this is all the information I have from a very limited time. You know, I'm one man, trying to get the word out, trying to educate people as much as I can and get the information. I've got three jobs, and I'm trying to do this. If I, if this was my job, this would be crazy. I would have a lot more people behind it. And like I said, this is just me trying to do this. I have a family as well. I grew up here in West Sacramento. When, as soon as I could, I left, because when you're 20 years old, you hate West Sacramento. There's nothing to do. There's nothing fun. You know, you have to go to Sacramento to have fun, Old Sac to have fun. And as soon as I had a family, I moved exactly back to West Sacramento. And I appreciate it now. I appreciate what West Sacramento is. And this decision, if you agree to this hard liquor license, I'm not going to appreciate that. It's just not right. Keep it the beer and wine, like he says? Cool. I'd have no problem with him personally or that. Hard liquor, that's, that's no. That's just not what we want. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mark Patrick, followed by Debbie Reinike.
How you doing? Obviously, no, my name is Mark Patrick. And I'm not from this community, but I come from a smaller community I own. And I've worked in this industry, and I know Mr. Singh, and I'm talking on his behalf. One thing that I do is I do sell beer and wine. Wine is what I work on in life. And I'm passionate about wine. I think it's fabulous. And wine, from the beginning of time, has added to the value of our community. One thing that I do, and I understand a lot of these folks are talking about liquor, and there is high-end liquor that they're talking about, but one thing that he is going to offer is some high-end wine. And at the store that he currently has, he has like Dom Perignon and Veuve Clicquot. And I don't know if you folks are familiar with that, but those are some fabulous wines. And they do add to community, to allow those type of things to be there. One thing that I bring to this is I was the manager and GM at David Berkley's in Sacramento, which has arguably been one of the highest-end gourmet specialty wine liquor stores in Sacramento for many, many years. I've looked at his store, and over the last year and a half, I've gotten to see how he does business. And I can tell you that he runs a clean store. He runs, yes, items are available across the board for the average American, all the way up to the high-end American. And I think it would be a disservice to not allow this gentleman to have the ability to compete in your community, provide tax base, provide jobs, and allow you guys to have that opportunity. Yes, there's a Tower Mart there. My company services that Tower Mart. Yes, there's Nugget. My company services Nugget. As far as that Tower Mart, I can tell you that Tower Mart is not going to provide the same services that he is already providing, at least on the wine side, because that's my expert opinion. They do not carry Veuve Clicquot. They do not carry any of these high-end items that he is going to allow to have for this community to be there. Same thing on the liquor side. I don't, I'm not the expert on that side. My company does sell that, but he does carry high-end spirits that just like the Nugget. And I can tell you, the Tower Mart does not. So he is going to add value to the community to do that. As far as mitigating those issues, I'm a parent. I have children. I live in a small community for a reason. I grew up in Montana. I don't want to have all this big crime that they're talking about. And that's the reason why I choose to live where I live. But that does not mean that he shouldn't have the opportunity to provide those services. And I understand having multiple outlets for that, the only outlet really is that Tower Mart right there. And he's going to provide different services in that Tower Mart. So I think the community needs to take a look at that. I think you guys need to take a look at that and give him an opportunity to show and prove that he is going to provide services that are beyond that. Not only that, I know that he's going to offer gourmet items, just like he does at his other store. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Debbie Reinike, followed by, I believe it's Steve Paletta.
I've also known Jazz for about 11 years. I live in Davis. I'm nervous that, but anyway, I understand your concern. My first house was in South Natomas, and so I know what can happen in a neighborhood. Excuse me. The one thing that I do know is that Jazz runs a really clean store. The problems that you're getting in the neighborhood won't be from him. He's a friend of the community, as opposed to an adversary. He has children too. His son's in the store, his wife's in the store. It's more of a family operation. And where you find the problems, where you find the beer and you find all that other stuff, the theft, you find that more in corporate operations, because they're big, whether it's Rayleigh's or even Tower Mart, because it's easier to steal. The people that are in there don't have a personal vested interest in your community. Where as a store owner, as a personal individual, everything that goes on in that store matters to him. And the way he carries it, I think he'd be an asset to the community. It's nice when you're young and you're building a family. You can't go to fancy restaurants. You know, you've got to buy groceries. And it's nice to be able to entertain and have some good spirits and some good wine to share with your friends and family. And that's what Jazz will offer. So, to me, and honestly, because I've been there, I understand your concern, I think he would be a huge asset to the community. And I think four or five years from now, you guys will say, okay, I get it. You know, he's part of the Little League. He's supporting all the school functions. And he'll be out there at the park with you, patrolling. So, that's about what I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Reinike. Mr. Paletta, followed by Brian Christensen.
I've also known Jazz for about 12 years. And basically, what you're hearing, and it's two sides here, you have a gentleman that is a professional. He treats himself and runs a business in a professional manner. He's been very successful because of his integrity. And I agree with all the petitioners here tonight, but, you know, rest assured that the man is a very, very good businessman, that, you know, is not going to treat his business, nor does he want loitering or minors, you know, to come in and buy fine wine or even spirits. So, I mean, to basically prevent a man of integrity that has a track record in Davis, where he owns two liquor stores that have been very successful, I think would be to turn to West Sacramento. And I wouldn't be here myself personally, on his behalf, to tell you this. So, rest assured, the relationship that I have had with him in business for many, many years has been of the most professional that I've ever seen and ever encountered. And he's very strict. He runs, everything is top-notch, and there's no baloney. So, I wouldn't be here tonight on his behalf to even present my feelings on him having a liquor store in West Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paletta. Brian Christensen, followed by, I think it's James Kakridis or Karidis.
I've got pretty much a lot of the same things to say that the last three people did. I've known Jazz for about 11 years. My father called on him beforehand. I just became his salesman about eight years ago. My dad went through my route list. My dad used to be a salesman before me. He went through my route list, and he circled all the good accounts I had, which was only about five at the time. Jazz was definitely one of them. He is a class individual. He runs a fine store. He's hands-on. He, I've never seen somebody that communicates with their customers better than him. If a customer asks him for something, he's on the phone with me if he doesn't carry that, asking if I have that. I think he would be an asset to your community. And he's just a great man. I think he deserves a chance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Kakridis, followed by Kimberly Lapp.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is James Kakridis. I'm the project manager for Jefferson Plaza. We have talked to Mr. Singh about the liquor store. It's not the typical liquor store in the corner that people like to assemble outside and drink wine. He didn't lease 1,000 square feet just to sell liquor. His space is almost 3,000 square feet. And we have very restrictive conditions on the lease for his possibility financially and liability. And we can even cancel the lease if we see that something is not right according to what we see. We checked with ABC. His record has no complaints. And we believe that this is going to be a gourmet, upper-end liquor store that will sell much more items than plain liquor. And the liquor he will carry is going to be middle to upper end. It's not going to be for somebody to walk in, buy a bottle, and go drink in the street. There will be no loitering outside. There will be no assembly outside of the area. We're going to strictly enforce that for him. And as I said before, that we have very strict conditions on the lease, and if he's something that's not right, we have the right to cancel the lease. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kakridis. Kimberly Lapp, followed by Patricia Talbot.
I manage the shopping centers. This one as well, that's owned by the gentleman that I work for. And I think one thing that people are misconceiving is that the shopping center itself and, you know, the quality of the shopping center is based on the landlord, not the tenants. We have already installed various cameras out at the locations. So, we can watch it 24 hours a day, and we have that at every center that we own. And trust me, the owner doesn't sleep very much at night. So he tends to be up late and calls, you know, will call the police on any loitering whatsoever. So, the quality of the center is the landlord, not, you know, necessarily the tenants, as he said, the lease is very strict. The things that have been The things that have been submitted and stated tonight are kind of surprising to me. For one, the signatures and petitions, very, very few of them are within the 500-foot radius. So a lot of those came from outside of the area, even outside of the city on a few of them. And the comments I noticed that were submitted, the bad comments that were submitted, came from a website with various comments, more of which actually were good comments, but those were conveniently left out. And I'm confused because I was under the impression that, I'm kind of confused about what is the goal, whether it's to be not allow them to have hard liquor. Because from what was submitted, it was my understanding that having the store was going to be detrimental to the neighborhood because of drunk drivers and children. But I also heard tonight that just getting rid of the hard liquor would be okay with. But beer and wine have the same effect as hard alcohol. So essentially, some people have contradicted themselves. And the one statement about there being no evidence to support that the residents want these, the fact that they do continue to open and stay in business at all the various locations somewhat speaks for itself that if they are staying in business and continuing to open and expand, the public certainly has a desire for them. And a lot of this that I've been hearing about, like the crime and the drugs, those are obviously already an issue. And he's not open yet. Yet he's kind of taking the rap for some of it. That, a lot of that has, you know, it somewhat opens a door to a big area, but it's not up to society or liquor stores to control their kids. And at night, they should be at home in bed sleeping, not out on the streets. And that's requiring a more active role from the parents rather than public stores and convenience stores, or any store for that matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lapp. Patricia Talbot followed by Tamara Crop.
I too am going to speak on Jazz's behalf. I've been in the wine and beer distribution business for the last 13 years. I've seen a lot of businesses come and go. What the other salespeople aren't telling you is that when we go and visit him to take his order or to collect our dollars or whatever we're doing, we're made to wait and wait and wait. Sometimes we'll wait 40 minutes. He will always put his customers first. But by waiting, we're also observing. And I wish I had $1 for every time that this man made somebody pull a driver's license out of their pocket to buy either tobacco or alcohol. With that, I understand your concerns. I was a kid too. We've all were kids at one point. But if your kids or your kids or anybody's kids here know that this man is going to make you take out ID every time that you've got to wa, every time you're walking in there, that is going to be a deterrent. Yes, I sell him beer. Go to his store in Davis. It's $20 a bottle. This is not, I mean, what he's, what I sell to him are really high-end products. Yes, it's a $70 bottle of port. Yes, I've got an eye on his $125 bottle of Quintessa. Sure, he's going to have lower-end wines. He's going to have affordable value wines. But that's not where the direction he's taking the store. He's got two others that already serve that purpose. What he's looking to do and what he has asked me to do is put together a proposal, because yes, I call on the Nugget. Yes, I do service West Sacramento. And what he's looking for are items that they don't have. And it is going to be a specialty store for the people who enjoy cognac, for the people who enjoy port, for the people who enjoy fine wines and fine beers. Yes, there are 750 milliliter cork bottles of beer at $20 a pop. That's not something that the kids are going to go after. They're going to go after the Coronas. They're going to go after the Molson. That's where they're going to go. They're not going to go after what he's bringing in, at least what he's asked me to bring in. And he will card your kids. He may even card you.
Thank you, Ms. Talbot. Tamara Crop followed by Mark Crop.
I'm a 43-year resident, corner of Jefferson and Blacker, right next door. I just want to let you know that I never received a letter saying that that's what was going in there. I met the gentleman on the street. I asked him, he asked for my address. I gave it to him. I asked why, and he says, because we're going to put a store in at the end of the building there. And I'm thinking to myself, okay, you're going to put a store in, but we've got an organic store going in. Didn't ask him. I said, okay, fine, whatever. And that was it. I didn't hear anything that we could oppose it or anything until Santino came to me and said, hey, you know, I've walked past the sign in the window because I take my son to karate every single day. I don't think we need this store particularly in that building. We can put it Lowes, has a nice cornered, open area that that's maybe where it should go. We've got too many other places. I understand. I have nothing against what he's going to sell. I enjoy fine wine. I buy all my wine at Nugget. But other than that, I don't think it needs to be where we've got kids going past every day. We've got the Eagle Cafe, nice place where you sit out and have coffee. We've got the tanning salon where there's, you know, people going in and out. I just don't think we need it in that particular area.
Thank you, Ms. Crop. Mark Crop followed by, I believe it's Lonnie Chen.
Hi there. Everybody that has came up and is against this, I really appreciate everything you've said. I couldn't add anything to it. The only thing I could say is, how would you like to have dinner every night and look out your window and see something like this? That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Crop. Lonnie Chen followed by Amy Argastani.
Good evening. I'm Lonnie Chen. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak about this. I'm actually a new resident of West Sacramento. My husband and I just moved here recently and purchased a home in the Southport area. And we learned about this as well as the issues with the fire station 45 last night. We came to that as well as this because we want to be actively involved in West Sacramento. I lived in Sacramento most of my life, actually. And I want to just say ditto to everybody who's here to oppose this liquor store. Me personally, I don't think that West Sacramento needs another liquor store after having lived here for about a month and a half now. If you drive along Jefferson Boulevard, there's a 7-Eleven, there's Chevron stations, not to mention Nugget and Target and all these, and there's a bar along Jefferson Boulevard as well. A liquor store by any other name is still a liquor store. It's a convenience store that sells liquor, whether it's hard liquor, whether it's beer or wine or any other spirits, it's liquor. And I don't believe that West Sacramento needs another liquor store. Everybody that commented what they said, I agree with what they said, and I just want to add a few things. A lady earlier had mentioned some of the required findings and analysis. Two, it says here that the request it uses is essential or desirable to the public comfort and convenience. Well, I strongly disagree with that. Hard liquor sales, it specifically says that hard liquor sales are not essential to the public comfort and convenience. It's certainly not something that's comforting to me to know that there's going to be people, there's a high school nearby, there's elementary schools nearby where students can go. UC Davis is nearby. That's my alma mater. I've been there. I know what college students do. As far as carding people and taking the time to card them, that doesn't prevent students' transience. When there's a liquor store, there's all different types of characters that will want to come in. A gentleman earlier had mentioned that this particular store is going to be somewhat like a David Berkley's. I don't know if you are familiar with David Berkley's. I've been to David Berkley's. I've purchased and I've been in there. And I believe that the owners would be offended if they were to know that this particular Aggie Liquor is comparing themselves to David Berkley's. It's fine wine. I've mentioned, I've heard comments like gourmet and that, you know, he's going to be having specialty wines. Well, what's gourmet? What's the specialties that we don't already have? Somebody on his behalf mentioned that he already has two other stores that serves the purposes of non-specialty items. Well, how do we know that once the store opens, it's not going to be a third store that serves these such purposes? My husband and I came to West Sacramento because we wanted to develop a family and grow and continue living here. I know I ran out of time, but I just wanted to thank the commission in listening to all of us and really consider what another liquor store of all these stores that have been on Jefferson Boulevard and around West Sacramento will do to the community.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Amy Argastani followed by Mike, I believe Mike Xu.
Good evening. My name is Amy Argastani. Me and my husband just moved to West Sacramento about five months ago. And I can say we chose West Sacramento because of the family environment. We love to see people walking to Nugget, Target, with their families, riding their bikes, spending time together. I'll have to say I was dismayed when I heard about another liquor store opening up along Jefferson. And then I also found out about another liquor store who just got their permit to open up in the Lowes Shopping Center, right next to Pendex Express. That's two new licenses within a few months. Starting from the freeway going all the way down Jefferson Boulevard, I think there are already enough places for a person to consume and/or purchase alcohol. It doesn't matter if Aggie Liquor and Deli does not sell alcohol after 2:00 a.m. In my opinion, that's far too late. Nothing ever good happens after midnight. We need to be attracting other types of businesses to the Southport area. Some of the speakers that came here and spoke in support of Aggie Liquor and Deli, I noticed have vested business interests in the store opening up. It's not just kids we have to worry about, but irresponsible adults also, probably more than kids. And I'd like to say to the owners of Aggie Liquor and Deli that we need more information on what is considered gourmet. I think Nugget already offers enough gourmet items when it comes to alcohol and wine. And I think they're probably already making enough profit off of the kids in Davis, and they should keep their business there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Argastani.
Dear commissioners and fellow citizens, my wife Lonnie and I are new residents to the city of West Sacramento. So I'm very happy to be here to participate in this meeting and to exercise my responsibility as a resident of the city. So you've heard both sides giving arguments. And I'd just like to say that this is a very beautiful city and I've been enjoying the city, taking walks, jogging, walking around the river, coming to the different commission meetings. And so I'd just like to challenge folks here, the business owners here, to think creatively, use your imagination to come up with the ideas, business ideas that will empower us citizens of the city to live a healthy life. And that's good for us, good for the city. So it's a challenge. I'm sure we can do it. We can come, work together. We can discuss, think of different ideas, but let's think of, let's just use our imagination. There are many ways we can open up stores, businesses that are good for all the residents of the city, that's good for the economy of the city. So it's a challenge for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all of our speakers, so it comes back to the commission now, although I'd like to keep the public forum, the public hearing open so that if there are questions of the applicant or others, we can pursue those. Any questions from the commissioners at this point? Otherwise, I'll close the public hearing and we'll deliberate. Any questions?
I may have a question for the lieutenant, but not at the moment. So I'm just asking.
Mr. Recklow, that can, we can bring that.
Yes, I can. That can be done outside the context of the public hearing.
Thank you. Any other, otherwise I'm going to close the public hearing for our deliberations. All right, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for our deliberations. Any commissioners?
Mr. Morzini. Thank you. And I want to kind of follow what I think Commissioner Leibig was implying. We continued this item because we were unsure of the process that's used to determine whether or not a liquor license is appropriate and how people go about getting a liquor license. This is a conditional use, so it's not like has been indicated earlier, you just apply and you get one. There's a process, a vetting process. And we do have a representative of the police department here tonight. I think we'd like to hear how this process takes place because there was a comment made by the West Sacramento Police Department regarding this item.
Evening. My name is Todd Sockman. I'm a lieutenant with the West Sacramento Police Department, and I'll be happy to answer any questions they might have. If you'd like, I can go ahead and open.
Maybe kind of walk us through the process. The commissioners aren't real familiar, except maybe Mr. Galvin over on my extreme right, with how ABC works and that application process about, because as the public has indicated, there are several new liquor stores now. We just, next to Pendex Express by Lowes, there's one there now. And there are quite a few places that sell alcohol. Tower Mart's right across the street. They sell spirits there. So how is the determination made as to whether or not, from a police department's standpoint, an application is a reasonable one regarding the site? And I guess that's our purview here, is this an acceptable site for a liquor store?
And just before you answer, so in the action, just once again for us, is the conditional use permit, beer and wine's allowed to be in that location, could go in there without having to come to us? So it's the conditional use is simply for the sale of hard alcohol, hard liquor? That's what we're bringing up that's different from just being allowed to go into that location?
Well, the police department, we have two different roles in this. The planning commission would give us, the planning department would send over different permits for us to review. And then on the other hand, I also get applications from ABC, and there's different types that applicants apply for. What I would do is after I get the application, a lot of times I have to actually call back to ABC to do some of this review. What I have to find out first is, can we actually have one there? And that's based on population. So in Yolo County, the way the population is set is it's one liquor store for every 1,199 residents. So it's not a, it's not a zone based on, you draw a circle on a map, it's not that, it's based on population. This application, my understanding is, would be the sixth within that population zone, which is the max that you can have. The question obviously came up about the other one that was just approved, that would have been the fifth, and then this one obviously is the sixth. Unless the population changes, then this would be the last one in that zone that would be approved. But there are built-ins that would, despite that, I can write a letter of protest to ABC preventing, hopefully preventing a license from being issued. And that would be a high crime rate in a particular area. At the time of the application, type of calls in a one-mile radius, such could be transient problems, alcohol-related problems, those kind of things. I mean, it has to have some sort of correlation to having a liquor store present at that location. The other things that could affect it is a school within 600 feet, homes within 500 feet, that could be, and I'm assuming that's why some of the petitions came out and everything. But these type of things are the things that I can write a protest letter to ABC over. But these type of things are the things that I can write a protest letter to ABC over. We also do background research, sometimes through ABC, sometimes through our own systems to try to determine if there are crimes or on the store owner histories, or they have problems with their current ABC license in their current community under that person's name. If it's under that person's business and that owner themselves, under their name, we can find out if they have any ABC complaints against them. So those are the things that I can deny them on. They don't meet those needs, and I have 30 days to respond back to ABC and say, and I either approve or disapprove. And it really, a lot of it has to do with the type of license that they apply for. So in this particular case, it's an off-sale license. I did put some stipulations in my letter to them with the thought that it was a, according to ABC, and they gave me the wrong information when I called, but it was, I thought they were applying for a 42 license, which would enable them to consume alcohol on the premise. And with that, I have a whole, there's a whole bunch of things that the police department could put restrictions on them for. Things like, you know, you can't consume outside of the facility, you can't put an outside patio out, you have to stop serving alcohol in the place at a certain time, you can actually do that where they can't stay open until 2:00 in the morning, and things that were brought up as a concern here. So those are the things that I review and I write to ABC.
Would you mind if I asked a question?
Thank you. Lieutenant, one more question, Mr. Moore?
What about the school right by?
It's outside of the 600-foot radius, according to ABC.
Wow. Sure. I mean, I'm-
I have to go by-
I just look at my properties that I own, and I get a pretty big circle on it, and I mean, it seems like that would have to be within the circle. It's on the same piece of property.
The first question I asked ABC, they told me no, unfortunately, it's right outside of the 600-foot radius.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, it's close. I mean, is that a criteria on the license from us, the city, or from ABC?
No, that would be on the ABC portion of it in my protest letter, if I were to write a protest letter to ABC.
Just for clarification there, they look at from the building as opposed to, you know, our regulations look at from the parcel, so maybe that'd be, that makes quite a difference.
Maybe that's why it gets such a big circle sometimes, huh?
Yes, yes, we take it from all sides of the parcel.
Well, I don't know. I mean, it just seems like we get big circles, and there's areas we can't talk about in, you know, because we may benefit from it.
Their circle would be considerably smaller.
Okay.
There's another question, too, Mr. Leibig?
Fine.
Or you have more, another question?
No, no, that's okay. But I mean, so you looked at it, or ABC looked at it? You're saying ABC said another fine that way?
It's interesting how these work, is ABC sends the application to me, the request, and then I in turn call ABC back to gather information. So it seems like it's a strange, it's a strange process, but that's basically how it works.
Okay.
So I wonder, I'm just wondering if they're even, if I don't oppose it within 30 days, and if there's not six in that area, then it automatically goes into effect, so.
Very well may, yeah.
Thank you. This, Mr. Leibig?
Hi, Lieutenant Sockman. Thank you. I had a question. Tower Market has been, or Tower Mart has been referenced, and crime was referenced. I assume in your report that you did research crime in the area and took that into consideration when making a recommendation on this proposal?
Well, I did. It was, like, it has to have some sort of nexus to a liquor store, some sort of connection. You know, you, you'd have to have something to do with alcohol, something to do with that store, some kind of crime that you can link to the consumption of alcohol. So a lot of crimes can do that. I mean, it very well could be, and so, but I did do the research on that, and the crime rate, city, you know, and you have to really judge it by citywide. I mean, it's not as that high in that particular area, in that one-mile radius. I understand it's a one-mile radius, too, which, again, if you're talking about pinpointing that store with a one-mile radius, it's really not that big of an area, so.
Specifically, the Tower Mart, nothing came up in your analysis to flag a concern?
We have calls for service at Tower Mart, but not the ratio that would really prevent the store from going in.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for lieutenant?
Just a couple more. Lieutenant Sockman, thanks for all your information. Actually, you've answered a lot of my questions, so just kind of summarize what you're saying. Then you check on the crime rate in the area, the calls per one-mile radius, alcohol-related incidents in that area, and then the proximity of schools and homes to the area. And then you did stipulate, you do kind of a background check on the owner, or check to see if that particular operator has had problems before with similar types of business? And I'm assuming then that all that stuff was done in this process?
Yes, I checked on the owner. I checked with Davis, the city of Davis, and asked, the questions I would ask would be, the current owner with that business name, and what problems would you have? And so it wasn't anything that would lead me to believe that I couldn't issue the permit.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. That's been very informative.
Thank you very much. So we'll continue on with, actually, with our deliberations, and the staff report in front of us is supportive of moving this forward. So other comments, concerns? Mr. Ledesma?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was not at the April 15th meeting, so did not benefit from the workshop, so I apologize if questions are repetitive or just general inquiries. But Sandra, first of all, on the conditional use permit, I mean, once we grant this, or if we were to grant this, as they say, it stays with the owner, they would go for a period of one year, is what I'm seeing, basically. Is it transferable? So if they were to sell, or?
If, for instance, he sold the business to another liquor store-
Liquor store. It would stay, because it stays with the land, with the entitlement, so to say, with the land. Okay. And is there, in this, this is not, I should stipulate, I appreciate Lieutenant for coming out and answering questions about the process. My line of questioning isn't really around the issue of crime related to this. It's really about kind of the land use and what we're choosing to have here, or what's allowed. So on this particular issue, it's, and maybe the issue or the explanation came up in the original workshop, but it does say it's an Aggie Liquor and Deli, and it does say that's an Aggie gourmet liquor. Is there some sort of, has there been, or what the workshop was, did they define the business plan? The staff report really doesn't say what it is that was, what they're planning to do there, than sell hard liquor, wine, and beer, high-end spirits. Is there, and I'll take you back for an example. When we did grant the-
Local?
The other-
Local wine, yeah.
I'm sorry for the name of it, whatever, I'm sorry. But they did talk about they were planning to have ours' operation. I did see descriptions of what they wanted to sell, or what they want to do, wine tastings. They were going to kind of position it, the store, a little bit as a, granted, it's a liquor store, but they wanted to try to appeal to people that wanted to maybe buy some wine or wine taste, or beer taste, or whatever they're going to do. Was there any description involved in this? Because I don't see one. I just see that, is there going to be a deli in here?
No, there's not going to be a deli.
And so the only descriptor we have here is that it's going to be gourmet liquor?
They're going to sell high-end spirits, beer, wine. There will be some groceries, snacks, nuts, those types of things, as part of the business.
In your, in the, is, in the, in the staff report, it did bring up that request use is essential and desirable. And frankly, I kind of agree with, I forgot who it was in the public, but it's kind of what I zeroed in on. I'm not clear on our, we say in one statement-
It's not essential?
It's not essential, however, it's a commodity that is desired, and-
And there-
I understand that-
There might be some, there's some people in the community-
Yeah, I'm not going to lie, I'll probably run out and find, if I needed a bottle of wine, you know, it's, yeah, it's convenient to have a store open at 1:00 in the morning or whatever, and I get that. But we say in one sentence, it's not essential, but it is a convenience. And I'm just, I kind of recall at the same property, we had a discussion five or six years ago for a conditional use permit for a drive-thru. We denied. For a similar reason, it would have been nice and convenient, it didn't mean we needed it. And I'm sort of landing at the same place with this one. It would be nice and convenient for those who desired to buy a high-end bottle of Dom Perignon at 2:00 in the morning. It's just, I, but is it absolutely essential? And the staff report states it's not.
It's not essential. We're saying we recognize that it's not essential, but it may be desirable for some people.
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ledesma?
I'm kind of, I want to echo some of Commissioner Ledesma's sentiments. The way I understand the ABC process is qualifying for a license is sort of a set formula, in other words, based on high crime concentration of licenses. And there's, it doesn't really take into account whether it's sort of the right business for that area. It doesn't drill down that far. As long as it meets certain requirements, we're not over-concentrated, it's not high crime, then it would qualify for a license. But I think it's part of our, what we need to look at is whether or not it's the right business for that area. And as I look at the staff report, I agree that, I don't think that, as Commissioner Ledesma said, that it's sort of essential. I'm not seeing what service this provides that is not already provided in the area and serviced by other retailers in the area.
Other comments? Mr. Moore?
Why, thank you. I have a couple of questions, one of which I called Sandra on earlier this week because I'm getting old and I forget. But years ago, and when I say years ago, this could be five years, 10 years, 15 years, we may have to go to the old timer next to you with more gray hair than I have, but we actually denied a liquor license on Sacramento Boulevard. And the reason we denied the license, and I happen to recall this for some reason, it was just that we had too many stores nearby. And my question to Sandra the other day was, is that a decision that the city made, or is that a decision that ABC made?
Before Steve addresses it, I checked our logs, and the only conditional use permit that I could find that the planning commission acted on for the, for hard liquor sales was for a store located on 418 C Street. It was for B&amp;B Food and Liquor, and that was in April 1993.
I've been around that long, so it's possible.
So I don't, I didn't find anything for-
Yeah, for some reason, I thought it was down by the highway patrol, but we had the gas station across the street or something had alcohol, so we didn't need it again. But I didn't know if we denied the application or ABC did. And I was, Steve, do you happen to recall?
No, I have no recollection of that.
That's okay.
But let's go look at the process again, and as Lieutenant Sockman has indicated earlier, the ABC submits the application to the city. It's the police department commenting back to ABC that makes the determination as to whether or not, you know, there is an over-concentration. The planning commission's job is not really to look at that, and it's really not part of the findings. Our findings are much more, are much distinct, very distinctive, and do not include that analysis. So it would not be a part of the planning commission's-
Well, the over-concentration, I think the lieutenant said that there's an absolute limit to what can go into a certain area, so-
There is a limit, no. Ordinarily, how it's based is by a census tract. So for example, if a particular tract down here is Southport, and there's probably, you know, just in excess of 7,000 people there, and if they broke it down by tract, then a maximum of six liquor stores could go in the area. Now, you know, reasonably, six liquor stores for a population of 7,000 people, some people may think that's excessive, and once again, is really dependent on the area. But that's the standard that's used by ABC, and it does not vary from one geographic area of the state or even county to another. That's a standard that they use as the basis of their complete review.
Oh, and I understand that.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
I just, you know, I just recall doing that years ago, and it was a long time ago, but I don't remember why. And things change. Sandra, the other question I have that seems to be a little concerning to me is that people that live directly around it said they never received their notice. Do we have a way of knowing how that was sent out? Did we send that out, or?
Labels were sent out. We sent them out for the public notice. When there, when an item is continued to a date certain, we don't re-notify.
No, I understand.
We do put a notice in the newsletter. Now, the notices go to property owners, so if they're renters, they wouldn't get the notice. It goes directly to property owners.
But it seems like some of the property owners are saying they didn't get it. Of course, you know, maybe it's not that many people we had to send it to because-
There was quite a number of people that were, that was on the list.
Okay. I guess my only concern with this project is, you know, the fact that we have a concentration in that being two liquor stores, Tower Mart and this, across the street from one another. And I understand how if you go down all the way from Jefferson Boulevard, all the way down Jefferson Boulevard, I mean, you've got Marino's Liquor, you've got the service stations and everything. But I am a little concerned that we have two liquor stores side by side, and I think that's the neighbor's concern somewhat. Because he can sell his high-end wine and beer, and that's fine. But to continue past that, it gets a little concerning to people. And I guess that brings me back to when you're saying it's desirable. Well, it's really not desirable to some people. I'm sure someone likes it, but the neighbors. I guess I'm just having trouble understanding how we notified people. Because if you're telling me that we notified everybody, and the people we notified are here, that's fine. But if the people are saying we didn't get our notice, I mean, how do we know that that actually went out? That's still concerning to me.
Well, you know, the applicant submits a 500-foot radius map with labels, it gets checked by staff before the labels go out, and then they're sent out. And they're not sent out certified mail, so we don't know.
No, no.
Yeah, so we send them.
We just mail them out.
Yeah, and then when they come back-
Okay, but we mailed it.
Yes, we do.
Then I'm comfortable with it. Thank you.
Mr. Leibig? Mr. Leibig?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out, and thank you, Lieutenant, for coming out. I'm going to keep my comments brief, given that I'll just be building off of some of the other commissioners' comments. This is one of at least three permits going through or recently gone through the commission for Jefferson Boulevard. One is at Lowe's. The other one that commission hasn't seen yet was for Safeway. That's not to us yet. I don't know where that stands right now. I'm happy to hear, actually, that the community of members approve of the one at Lowe's, at least. So that is one that did get through the commission. It was also billed as a high-end liquor store, wine, beer, with a wine counter as well. And there is a fourth, I believe, in the process, but I'm actually not sure about that as well. I do believe Commissioner Moore brings up a good point. I understand that it's the police department's responsibility to look at density. However, the commission's decision point is based on findings, and Ms. Stone did address this pointedly, essential and desirable can be interpreted to include concentration and density, given that I'm considering the store at Lowe's, which appears to read almost identical to this one, and other stores in the area, as well as the community's comments to reflect the essential need for this. the essential need for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morzini, any comments?
Thank you, just, I'm gonna try to be brief. The other commissioners have, have stated pretty clearly the dilemma, or, or the, the importance of the decision, I guess, that we have here, and I think Commissioner Lebig, your mention of the Pan Express neighbor that we just approved, they have a wine bar there as well, and, and talked about a hi, high-end liquor, but I guess this really boils down for me, and even though, as Lieutenant Stockman indicated, it meets all the criteria as far as population and, and all that, and, and certainly the applicant is a, a person of integrity and runs a, a good business, I think that's been established. The issue that I have, though, is regarding the, the character of the community, and we have a lot of people from the community here, and as expressed in the, in the petition, that they're seeing that this doesn't fit in with their neighborhood, and some of these folks have been here 42 years, and some of them have been here a month and a half, I believe it was, or, or something like that, but we have a broad range of folks, and, and they, they want a certain, they have a certain expectation of the neighborhood, and, and we have the school on the same property, actually, it may be 500 feet away, but it's on the same property, it's on the same lot, and we have different, different stores there, there's a produce market gonna open, and the Eagle Cafe is, is getting started now and, and starting to build up a clientele, and so that's part of the flavor of the community too, and I'm not so sure that, that a liquor store is gonna be a desirable, another liquor store is gonna be a desire, desirable amenity, even though there may be a demand for that particular product, and that's where, where we come in, is, is this particular site a suitable site, even though it's legally an acceptable zone, is this really gonna, to be something that's gonna help or, or possibly impair the integrity of, of, of the neighborhood? And if, if we choose the wrong way, we could really harm the character of the community. On the other hand, or we could deprive an opportu, an opportunity for a businessperson to seek a valid living, so it's a tough, I started to say dilemma, and it, and it is kind of a dilemma. I remember going through the same exercise with the Tower Mart, and there were, there were nearly as many people talking about never frequenting that store because of all the undesirables that it would attract, and actually, there's probably not a person that lives in, in that neighborhood that doesn't go to the Tower Mart on occasion, because it has established itself as, as a reputable store. The other thing that concerns me is having a liquor store right across the street from another liquor store, and, and that process, as Lieutenant Stockman indicated, doesn't talk about proximity, it just, you can have six in Southport because there are one per 2,000 people basically allowable, and that's, that's a rule of thumb, and do we wanna be on the, the, the narrow end of that, or, or on the wide end of that? And, and I guess, I, I'd have to say that the people in the neighborhood have spoken, and I'm pretty sympathetic to their, their concerns about the character of their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morzini. I'll, I'll share my comments and my feelings about this, and then I'll look to the Commission for a motion. For me, when we have a conditional use permit coming before us, it's, it's to request an exception. We spend a lot of time on the zoning ordinance and the, and how, what we feel works and which locations, so this, this to me is really an exception, and it has to, it does have, it does require these findings be powerful, and just like Commissioner Morzini, I, I am quite persuaded by the concerns about the integrity and character of the neighborhood. The neighbors heard about that this was coming forward, they've come and spoken to us, and, and I, with all due respect to, to the staff, and I, I know there's some, there's some caveats here, that there's some unknowns, I, I'm persuaded that this, this is not, and it, as an exception, will not meet our, our community's goals for this, for this space. So that, those are my, my thoughts, I'd like to turn it to the Commission for a motion. It's coming to us as a, as a motion to approve. If we, if there is a motion that comes forward to deny, I request that, that, that there'd be, there'd be statements about the denial with respect to findings, but I'll leave it open for a, a motion forward.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion that we not approve the conditional use permit for this, for this request, and we do need to make findings, but can we do that post? Or do you want me to make it now?
If you turn to, if, just quickly, if you turn to page five of the staff report, if, if it says denial, find, find that the required findings for the approval of these permit cannot be made for the following reasons, and then we provide that, and the request is denied. Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, if I, if I might help a little bit, I think as much as you can articulate reasons for the denial, I think that would be great, staff can work with what you've said, if necessary, and flesh that out a little more fully, but it would be good to give us the general outlines, I don't think you have to worry about the exact words.
Okay.
I, I will state then, based on what I heard, was that we could make, make findings out of this is, we could not make findings or agree with staff's findings that this isn't essential or just desirable to the public comfort or convenience. We talked about proximity of a, of a liquor store across the street and along Jefferson, we talked about also just the availability of, of other liquor sales in, in, along the Jefferson corridor, so I think we could utilize that. Secondly, I think I heard from other commissioners regarding the integrity of the neighbor, of the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood, and they thought that sale of hard liquor in this particular shopping area in this neighborhood does not fit, as our Chair articulated, does not fit into the standard or the vision we have for our neighborhoods. So I think with those two comments, I do continue my motion, I'm sorry, I don't continue my, but I'll finalize the motion to deny the conditional use permit request.
Move by Mr. Ledesma, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Galvane. All those in support of the denial, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? All right, that passes unanimously. Mr. Rickla, could, could you please read the appeal process for this?
Yes, I can. Any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission this matter to the City Council by filing a written appeal with the City Clerk within 15 days of tonight's meeting and paying the applicable fee.
Okay. There's a, thank you, Mr. Rickla, there's a request for a quick break, we'll, we'll